I know we are, we're actually four minutes late. All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Tonight's a very special meeting. It's the open forum. Should get interesting. We have a very, at least one page, and I'm sure there might be one or two more, where we can hear from the public. But first, let's do a roll call and a pledge.
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Council members Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Mary Eva Korn.
It's a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a busy meeting tonight, not with the usual business, but hearing and discussing things and matters that are of interest with all y'all. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to call you down one at a time, but I'm going to tell you, we'll kind of queue it. And so maybe if it's, if you're coming up, I'm going to call three. First person come to the podium, and then when they're done, I'll keep calling one and just come down and sit in that front row, if that's okay. And we can just kind of move along like that. So let's start off, Mr. John Coe. And then after that, it's Mary Ann Riggi. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. R-I-G-I-H-I.
Riggi.
Riggi, okay. And then Mr. Kenworthy. James Kenworthy, where are you? There he is. So if you could come down and just sit in the front row there, and we'll get going. All right, you're up.
Well, thank you. We'll have a bunch of people on bat here. My name is John Coe, and I'm at 1899 Third Avenue. So thank you, council, for serving. And I'd just like to, I guess I'm not really trying to catch you up on my week, but I wanted to tell you more about the water meeting that I went to, because it was fascinating to me, because, and I actually just had a chance to talk to two of the council members, but one of the strange restrictions on my water share is that it's restricted on pumping. They don't want the water to be pumped uphill. I guess that changes things. But I can do as much downhill as I want, and I really want to generate electricity from it, so that's no restriction at all. So anyway, I went to this water meeting, and I found this strange fact. They said I couldn't pump water to my front yard, but I could pump, I could have water downhill. And literally, some of my downhill neighbors, I'm hoping to distribute water to, or maybe some, do some kind of a deal with, you know, as per the water laws. But I wanted to share that with you, and also kind of go over, this is actually kind of my diagram for connecting up, and I have to work with a ditch company, and the ditch company's highly, you know, integrated with the city, of course. I want to also share just kind of a couple of things. I had a chance to like go over some information, and one of the topics is the airport information. And I want to go over that briefly, and I printed up a T-shirt, and I actually had given some people some T-shirts over this. And really, what it kind of comes down to is the operations of the airport are fairly noisy because of the odors and those aircraft. And if we were able to share some of the, some of the jump operations with other airports, that would potentially make it, and maybe even get glider operations in this area. That might make it so we can have some quiet days. And I've actually looked at the charts, and I know this is a little bit impromptu here, but, but basically, what it comes down to is our main highway is kind of a corridor for aircraft to come down to. So it really kind of comes down to them slicing up the lower part of the sky, and the sky up against the foothills are, is the area that could potentially be used, and there's some small airports up for the north from here. So potentially, the city could embrace those airports and try and get jump operations there, and potentially glider operations shared with Boulder as a much quieter alternative. I go to, you know, conferences on geographical information, and just to get back to the water, I realized after I got to this conference this year that I could have spent three days at this two-day conference just following the water track, because there's all kinds of water laws that are very interesting. And I just kind of bought this as a commodity, but it, it was really nice that I was able to interface with the city and get information from them. And I think we're on a five-minute schedule tonight, but I'm not going to go the whole time. So thank you very much for your service, and thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Coe. Mary Ann Riggi. And then if Michael Farnsworth could come down, and you're on deck. Or not on deck, you're one back from on deck. Don't know exactly what the baseball term would be for almost on deck. You're in the dugout. Get ready.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. I've spoken before on these subjects, and I'd like to bring them up again. I'm a resident of Aspen Meadows Apartments in Longmont, Colorado, and it's a very nice place, and I like being there. And it's a senior residence, and I'm glad that I got senior residency in Longmont. I've been here two and three years, almost three and a half years, and Longmont's a very nice place. And I was in Boulder before, and I really like Boulder, too. So I like Boulder County. But what I'd like to say is that I want to bring up what I feel, my opinion, on the need for a homeless shelter. I brought it up before in Longmont, and a permanent one, because we, I'm involved in volunteer work with the Agape program, and it's wonderful, and the people are wonderful. And I'm not changing the subject, but it's related. And there are seven churches involved now, and ours is one of them. And every night of the week, the homeless are taken into different churches. And it's a great program. And we go on Sunday nights, my friends and I, and volunteer to sit and talk with homeless people, and also to listen to their stories. I hope I'm not causing anybody any hearing problems. I hear some thumping. I'm sorry about this, how I'm talking into the microphone. But there's, I see a need, I was homeless at one time myself, and I see a need for there to be a homeless shelter year-round, because in Boulder, there is one. And some of the things that that helps people with who are without a residence is that during the day, there's a need for there to be shelter, even though the greatest need is at night and during the winter. But other months of the year, there are spiders that bite, and there is a possibility of sunburn and dehydration and different things that can happen to people that are homeless, that people may not think about. So that's, those are the major reasons I see the need. And once again, I want to say good things about Agape. There are cots now that are set up for the homeless, and that is so important for people to have a good support for their backs when they're sleeping. And there is food provided by volunteers. But I'd like to bring something else up, too, and use up my five minutes if I can. And the other thing I'd like to bring up is the need for seat belts in RTD buses. I was injured in two RTD buses, and one I was thrown from my seat and fell on the floor, and injured my leg and my spine. More so, I already had a, I already had a problem with my leg, and I was already using a walker. But since I was riding as a disabled person on an RTD bus, I didn't have a helper with me. And a helper really helps, because they can speak up for you when something isn't right. So I have seen the need for, for seat belts. And I got good news today, I want to fit this in if I can, from a call-and-ride driver who told me that he, he knows, this is hearsay, but he knows that in call-and-ride, they're going to have, definitely have seat belts in all the call-and-ride vans within the next five years. Now, this is hearsay, like I said, from one call-and-ride driver, but he said that it helps when the contractors, like them, the employees, speak up for their passengers, because there is a need for protection that people aren't thrown from their seats when the bus driver or van driver has to come to an abrupt stop. And I think I'm almost probably used up my time, but I wanted to say again how grateful I am to everyone who's offered me assistance through, through the years, the past five years I've lived in Colorado. And I want to say how grateful I am that I'm in a senior residence once again, and it's very nice. And I really love Longmont. It's a very nice place, and I like coming to the meetings and sharing, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Stan Toll, if you could come on down, and then Mr. Kenworthy? You're up. You're passing?
No, I'm not there.
Okay, all right. You're up.
Yeah, hold on, Stan. It's, you're, you're up. Two, two more. It's Mr. Kenworthy's turn. Sorry. A little confusing tonight.
Do I need to introduce myself?
Maybe. Go ahead.
James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. There have been two fracking accidents since the, in the last part of December. Three men went to, two workers went to the hospital. One of them died from his burns. So it was a matter, he burned to death. And there have been no reactions of any kind from Weld County, except for the fire marshal in New Raymer, who's afraid he's going to run out of firefighting foam. And Boulder County needs to be prepared for this kind of activity. And what I wonder, has there been any contact between city council members and any of the county commissioners about this issue? None? We need some. We need to put some pressure on the city, on the county commissioners. They say their hands are tied. Usually, when people's hands are tied, they try to get loose. But they're not trying to get loose. They're just, it's very convenient for them to say they have no ability to do anything. So I hope that some of the city council members will consider talking to county commissioners, and maybe stirring them up, stirring them up a little bit, and have them get with the program. So I'm done. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kenworthy. Cody Gardner, if you could come down, and then Michael Farnsworth? He's after him.
Michael Farnsworth, 25, College Court, Longmont. Just a sidebar to what I was going to speak on. I believe the two accidents weren't fracking problems, they were storage problems. There was two men that were killed, or one was killed, and the other was burned. Both of them burned.
I had a chance to like go over some information, and one of the topics is the airport information. And I, I want to go over that briefly, and I printed up a T-shirt, and I actually had given some people some T-shirts over this. And really what it kind of comes down to is the operations of the airport are fairly noisy because of the odors and those aircraft. And if we were able to share some of the, uh, some of the jump operations with other air, airports, that would potentially make it, and maybe even get glider operations in this area. That might make it so we can have some quiet days. And I've actually looked at the, uh, the charts, and I know this is a little bit impromptu here, but, but basically what it comes down to is our main highway is kind of a corridor for aircraft to come down to. So it really kind of comes down to them slicing up the lower part of the sky, and the sky up against the foothills are, is the area that, uh, could potentially be used, and there's some small airports up for the north from here. So potentially the city could, uh, embrace those airports and try and get jump operations there, and potentially glider operations shared with Boulder as a much quieter, uh, alternative. Um, I go to, you know, conferences on geographical information, and, uh, just to get back to the water, I realized after I got to this conference this year that, uh, I could have spent, uh, three days at this two-day conference just following the water track because there's all kinds of water laws that are, um, very interesting. And I just kind of bought this as a commodity, but it, uh, it was really nice that I was able to interface with the city and get information from them. And I think we're on a five-minute schedule tonight, but I'm not going to go the whole time. So thank you very much for your service, and thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kow. Mary Ann Righeye, and then, uh, if Michael Farnsworth could come down, and you're on deck. Or not on deck, you're one back from on deck. Don't know exactly what the baseball term would be for almost on deck. You're in the dugout. Get ready.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Um, I've spoken before on these subjects, and I'd like to bring them up again. I'm a resident of Aspen Meadows Apartments in Longmont, Colorado, and it's a very nice place, and I like being there. And it's a senior residence, and I'm glad that I got senior residency in Longmont. I've been here, uh, two and three years, almost three and a half years, and Longmont's a very nice place, and I was in Boulder before, and I really like Boulder too, so I like Boulder County. But, um, what I'd like to say is that, um, I want to bring up what I feel, my opinion on the need for a homeless shelter, I brought it up before in Longmont, and a permanent one, because, um, uh, we, I'm involved in volunteer work with, uh, the Agape program, and it's wonderful, and the people are wonderful, and I, I'm not changing the subject, but it's related. And, um, there are seven churches involved now, and ours is one of them, and every night of the week, um, the homeless are taken into different churches, and it's a great program. And, uh, we go on Sunday nights, my friends and I, and volunteer to sit and talk with homeless people and also to listen to their stories. I hope I'm not causing anybody any hearing problems. I, I hear some thumping, I, I'm sorry about this, uh, how I'm talking into the microphone. But, um, uh, there's, I see a need, um, I was homeless at one time myself, and I see a need for, um, there to be a homeless shelter year-round because, um, in Boulder there is one, and, um, some of the things that, that, uh, helps people with who are without a residence is that, um, during the day, there's a need, uh, for there to be shelter, even, uh, though the, the greatest need is at night and during the winter, but, uh, other months of the year, um, there are spiders that bite, and there is a, a possibility of sunburn and dehydration and different things that can happen to people that are homeless that people may not think about. So that's what, those are the major reasons I see the need, and, um, um, once again, I want to say good things about Agape. There are cots now that are set up for the homeless, and that is so important for people to have, uh, a good, uh, support for their backs when they're sleeping, and there is food provided by volunteers. But, um, I'd like to bring something else up too, and use up my five minutes if I can. And the other, uh, thing I'd like to bring up is the need for seat belts in RTD buses. Um, I was injured in two RTD buses, and one I was thrown from my seat and fell on the floor and, uh, injured my leg and my spine. More so, I already had a, and I already had a, um, uh, problem with my leg, and I had, was already using a walker. But since I was riding as a disabled person on an RTD bus, um, I didn't have a helper with me, and a helper really helps because they can speak up for you when something isn't right. So, um, I have seen the need for, for seat belts, and, um, I got good news today, I want to fit this in if I can, from a call-and-ride driver who told me that he, he knows, he, this is hearsay, but he knows that in call-and-ride, they're going to have, definitely have seat belts in all the call-and-ride, uh, vans, uh, within the next five years. Now, this is hearsay, like I said, from one call-and-ride driver, but he said that it helps when the, um, contractors like them, the employees, speak up for their passengers because there is a need for protection, that people aren't thrown from their seats when the bus driver or van driver has to come to an abrupt stop. And I think I'm almost probably used up my time, but I wanted to say again how grateful I am to everyone who's offered me assistance through, through the years, the past five years I've lived in Colorado, and I want to say how grateful I am that I'm in a senior residence once again, and it's very nice, and I really love Longmont, it's a very nice place, and I like coming to the meetings and sharing, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Uh, Stan Toll, if you could come on down, and then, Mr. Kenworthy? You're up. You're passing?
No, I'm not.
Okay, all right. You're up.
I'm up.
Yeah, hold on, Stan, it's, you're, you're up. Two, two more, it's Mr. Kenworthy's turn. Sorry. A little confusing tonight.
So do I? Do I need to introduce myself?
Maybe. Go ahead.
James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. Uh, there have been two fracking accidents since the, uh, in the last part of December. Three men went to, two workers went to the hospital, one of them died from his burns. So it was a matter, he burned to death. And, uh, there have been no reactions of any kind from Weld County, except for the fire marshal in New Raymer, who's afraid he's going to run out of firefighting foam. And Boulder County needs to be prepared for this kind of, uh, activity. And what I wonder, has there been any contact between the city council members and any of the county commissioners about this issue? None? We need some. We need to put some pressure on the city, uh, on the county commissioners. They say their hands are tied. Usually when people's hands are tied, they try to get loose, but they're not trying to get loose, they're just, uh, it's very convenient for them to say they have, uh, no ability to do anything. So I hope that, uh, some of the city council members will consider talking to county commissioners and maybe stirring them up, stirring them up a little bit, and, uh, have them get with the program. So I'm done. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kenworthy. Uh, Cody Gardner, if you could come down, and then Michael Farnsworth? He's after him.
Michael Farnsworth, 25, College Court, Longmont. Um, just a sidebar to what I was going to speak on. I believe the two accidents weren't fracking problems, they were storage problems. And there was two men that were killed, or one was killed and the other was burned. Both of them burned, I guess, but it wasn't a fracking problem, excuse me. All right. Uh, I'm here to talk about the Kiowa, uh, I haven't got that right. Uh, Kakua, uh, Vizoni. I think that that is a, um, situation that we should try to rectify, the council should try to rectify and get that zoning, uh, set up properly. I wish the council would reconsider that vote. Uh, I know there was two, two votes for, Mayor, you were one, to have that zoned properly. And, uh, I think that that facility is a great idea. This will bring about sixty to seventy, maybe eighty jobs to town, uh, of all varieties, both doctors, counselors, teachers, for these young men. And these young men are not, uh, they have been exposed and using drugs, and this will be a facility that accepts no court-ordered youth. It will be strictly voluntary youth, and they will be there for approximately six months. They will also have a school there. They will have any, a, uh, ability to, uh, school these youngsters and give them credits for those, that schooling. I was looking at that address, and, uh, the vacant lot, lot next to it, I don't really see an issue on property values as was brought up. Somebody felt that that would devalue property around it. Uh, at the moment, what it looks like most of that property is going to be, uh, apartment houses. Um, these young men will be taught and shown how they can straighten themselves out and be able to become, uh, the citizens and young people that their parents would be proud As I understand, the zoning is for a, uh, conditional use. And if that's correct, then that should not create any problems in the future, because if somebody wants to go into that same zoning, they'll have to meet that conditional use zoning. Now, I'm not an expert in zoning by any stretch of the imagination, but I do believe that that is a correct way that it should be looked at. I'm an older citizen in Longmont. I came to Longmont in the sixth grade in 1949. I have watched this town grow from what I was told was eleven thousand in 1949. I sold papers on Main Street on Saturday night when the town grew in size twice. There'd be tw- fifteen to twenty thousand people in Longmont that night, on Saturday night. They came to town to buy their groceries, to go to the show, buy their clothes, and then they would go back out to their farms. I watched I-25 being built. I can remember 1955, that you could drive down I-25 to 19th Street in Denver, and that's as far as it went. My wife is a native of Colorado, fourth-generation native. So I have been here, um...
A long time.
A long time.
Thank you very much for your remarks.
And I would like to see this changed.
All right, thank you. All right, Stanley Toll. And I'll just call you out one at a time, because it seems to take more time, queuing them up. Sorry, staff. All right.
Um, Mayor, Brian Begley, and council, uh, thank you for, uh, this opportunity to, uh, express ourselves. Uh, I'm Stan Toll, I'm a longtime resident of the city of Longmont. What I was going to, um, uh, present to the council just briefly, and I haven't really reviewed this, I just basically put some notes, but there was an article in The Atlantic, and it's concerning fifty years of white backlash. And to, uh, as we all know, that yesterday was the celebration of Martin Luther King's birthday. One of the things we have to, I think we need to remember that Martin Luther King was assassinated on April 4th, 1968. And after that assassination, Lyndon B. Johnson signed the Fair Housing Act. Now...
Just get the mic up real close to you, ma'am.
Oh, okay. That, yeah, that's, I don't want it to pop, so. Okay, so, like, this was almost the beginning of what could be described as the white backlash. Five years after this Fair Housing Act was enacted, um, the Justice, the Justice Department investigated and brought charges against a New York developer and his son. They finally settled in 1975 after a huge, very public, uh, legal battle. This is our introduction to the present president, Donald Trump. So, this is not, you know, well, well, the back, the white backlash was not just people like this. It came in all sorts of forms. Like, if we remember the history here, when there was, uh, desegregation orders, the white flight. The other thing that happened, there is also a lot of local laws put in specifically kind of to get around a lot of these, uh, things. What I, what I'd like to bring up is issues of local concern. Last year, I basically got called, because I'm sort of set up to do a certain amount of, uh, mobile mechanic work, I got called, um, to somebody that I knew, and it seems that their, their little van, since it was five below zero that night, wouldn't start for them in the morning. And what was going on here is that we had a woman, her boyfriend, and two kids staying in a van. This was not a case of both the, both of the adults were working full-time. The problem they were having with their housing was discrimination. One of them, actually it was the woman, had a, a domestic, um, hit, uh, indication on her, on her background. And so what was happening is they had been putting in applications, and they were being charged, let's say, I'm not sure how much, but they were charging, being charged application fees for each person, for herself, for the two kids, and for, for the man. And they were being rejected, and then their, their application fee was not being returned. And they were doing that over and over and over again. And what I would like to point out, I went to a housing forum, I don't know exactly what you'd call it, but essentially it was for landlords, and it was somebody from, um, I'm not sure if she was from, from, uh, you know, the housing agency or what it was. But anyway, to make it quick...
That's, I gotta cut you off, but thank you though, Mr. Toll. All right, Cody Gardner?
See if I can get this right. Is that about good?
Yep.
All right, thanks, uh, council members, Mr. Mayor, for having us. I, uh, Cody Gardner, I am a, uh, longtime resident, small business owner here in town. I actually run a treatment center. I wanted to come in for support for Kocua recovery and the zoning issue that was heard a little bit ago. Um, and I wanted to talk a little bit, just for a few minutes about sort of myself and what I understand about this epidemic that we're in in this country. Uh, I am a person in long-term recovery. What that means is I haven't had a drink or drugs since September 22nd of 2006. Uh, my wife is in long-term recovery. Uh, we're raising our kids in a household that does not have alcohol, uh, and we were all given that by treatment. I was intervened upon as an adolescent. My parents did not know what to do. Um, thus I ended up seeing a therapist and a psychiatrist, but I never really got clear about, uh, where my life was going to head. And at 23-years-old, another intervention happened, and I ended up, uh, going to treatment, staying for about six months, and I've got my life back. Married, kids, career, I've moved all over the country. I was also a probation officer here in Boulder County for about four years, uh, Boulder and Denver Counties, uh, both. And I worked with people with substance use disorder in the drug court, I worked with judges. Um, and I don't understand the whole zoning issue, but I want to urge the committee, the council, Mr. Mayor, to, to relook at this. Uh, we are in the worst epidemic this country has ever faced in terms of public health. It has been deemed, uh, the worst public health crisis of this generation. Uh, it has, at its peak, has surpassed the AIDS epidemic in terms of fatalities. Uh, the most recent numbers in September, in 2016 are that sixty-five thousand people died from opiates, eighty-eight thousand people died from alcohol. The, uh, life expectancy in this country has actually been lowered as a direct result of this. Uh, I have many friends across the country working in treatment, um, in recovery, some of them, some of them not. And, uh, a good friend of mine tells a story all the time where she says that addiction, substance use disorder is the only diagnosable, treatable condition that we intentionally don't diagnose at onset. So when we look at a kid and we say, "Well, he's, he's just a kid, she's just a kid, maybe she'll grow out of it, maybe we'll have, uh, you know, uh, something will change in their life." And we don't diagnose this, we don't give them treatment, we give them some medications, we let them see a therapist maybe, and they go on their way. And then they end up like myself in their mid twenties, kicked out of college, evicted from housing, parents changing locks on doors, stealing, doing what they need to do. Um, and that's not, that's not okay. And that's not going to address the crisis that we're in. I did find some numbers here in Colorado, one in seven high schoolers struggling with a diagnosable, treatable condition known as substance use disorder. Heroin deaths in Colorado have risen 23% uh, since 2010, that's according to the Colorado Health Department. In 2016, there were 442 opiate-related deaths, that's both prescription medications as well as heroin. Twenty-one million Americans with a substance use disorder, uh, and only 11% of them get treatment in the course of their life. Uh, we are facing the most critical and pivotal, pivotal public health crisis that we could face, um, and we're way behind. Colorado has as many treatment beds currently as the state of California has treatment centers. Uh, we just lost the Arapo House, that's five thousand treatment episodes a year, gone. Politically, this is the number one bipartisan issue in the last election. I was fortunate enough to be at the Surgeon General's Special Report last year in Los Angeles, where they unveiled the, um, the report on addiction, recovery, and treatment. Uh, and it was the first time that the Surgeon General in America has classified addiction as a diagnosable, treatable condition of the brain. So these are the things I'm passionate about. Uh, adolescents in this state need care. As far as I know, outside of state-run facilities, there's only a handful that take adolescents. Uh, I've never understood this whole property values, all of that stuff. Uh, I was a probation officer, uh, they used to talk about the jail, right, in Boulder County Jail, and nobody wants to live, why? Nobody wants to live near the jail. Uh, that's not where they're hanging out if they left. Like, they want to get as far away as possible, right? I would much rather, and again, sixty-five thousand people in 2016, that number is expected to rise in 2017. These are our neighbors, our friends, they're dying in our homes. There's people in this room right now that statistically qualify for substance use treatment from a statistical outlook. We need options. We need options for young adults, we need options for adolescents, we need options for older adults. So, uh, I would urge the committee to relook at this issue, and I would love to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Tom Simmons? And Martin Orner, you're going to be next.
Thank you. My name's Tom Simmons, and I'm a proud resident of Longmont. I'm here also to talk about Kocua recovery. The first thing that I would like to address is that I feel that, uh, there is not one council member here, uh, that opposes the opening of a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility for a young man aged thirteen to seventeen. I don't think I need to tell you about the opioid epidemic and the problems that our country faces, and Longmont has its full share. Uh, let it be known that Longmont can be a leader, actually, in helping our young adults seek the help they need to break this chain of addiction. I too am a recovering addict, and I'm proud to say I have 11 years. Thank you. The pressing issue that I see at this time is that the city council has tabled the matter of allowing Kocua to occupy and commence operations in the building of the former Bright Horizons childcare facility. This position has made it virtually impossible for Kocua to move forward on a building that is absolutely perfectly situated for its needs. I am also asking the council to revisit the zoning, the zoning issue and revise the city's zoning code to allow a residential childcare treatment facility, Kocua, a conditional use in business light industrial zoning districts in Longmont. That's a lot to say, and I'm not sure I understand completely, but I think I'm getting to the point, is that this thing has been tabled. Kocua has the opportunity to move into an absolutely perfect facility that best suits their needs. I've also looked at the facility, and I can't see at all how having an addiction treatment center where this is located would affect any residential property values at all. I'd like to get answers on that, and I, and I ask you if I could get input at a later date, is how that would be a negative impact. So finally, I would like to speak to the concern of some of the council members that this revision of zoning may result in Kocua being too close to a marijuana dispensary, a liquor store, or a liquor store. If this were the case, it would be virtually impossible to locate any treatment program within an area that is, uh, within an area that is absolutely full of liquor stores, bars, restaurants that serve alcohol, and marijuana dispensaries. For the addict that is truly seeking help and will go to any length to achieve sobriety, the fact that there may be a bar close by will have no bearing on their survival. So finally, in closing, I would like to ask that at least one of the council members who has opposed moving forward, please change your position so that you can revisit this zoning issue. There is nothing but good that will result in allowing Kocua to occupy the Bright Horizons building. I am asking you to support a more rapid approval, I am asking you to support a more rapid approval of the ordinance that proposes to revise the city's zoning code to allow residential childcare treatment as a conditional use in the light industrial zoning district. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I was gonna, I was gonna say that, uh, this is, uh, excuse me, sir, I believe Councilmember Peck would like to have a discussion with you. This is a, we can... This is a, we can treat this as a five-minute public invited to be heard, but you mentioned a later date, but why not tonight? Councilmember Peck?
Am I in trouble?
No, 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 you're gonna get some feedback.
Actually, what I would like, thank you, Mayor Bagley. What I would like is for Councilman Rodriguez, since you were on planning and zoning, can you tell us the process as far, Mr. Simmons asked for how rapidly we could bring this back? Can you give us some input on the process as to what we go through to, and when this would come back?
No, but there is a process.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, and thank you, Councilmember Peck. For instance, yes, there's specifically usually always an agenda item before City Council to allow for revisions or direction of staff to occur at the beginning of each meeting. Tonight's obviously a special circumstance due to a public forum. As such, that is when we, as council members, can bring this back. And should we at that time bring it back, it would have to come to a vote again from City Council. And if we were to, say, allow for the zoning amendment, that would therefore make it a conditional allowed usage, right? And therefore, that would have to then come in front of our Planning and Zoning Commission. And we are talking about a timeframe that will most likely take at least one month, if not longer, most likely longer. Because then, once Planning and Zoning has made their judgment, it can be then again appealed back to City Council, which then again is a delay in time. So that's just kind of, I would say, the most brief synopsis of the procedure going forward that this could take place in. And I'm not sure, I can't, I can't speak to how fast that procedure would occur versus the overhaul of our zoning codes as we move to our new zoning codes, and exactly what the discrepancy is there. I have not heard a timeframe on that, but they, I do not believe would be too far apart as far as the, the full zoning code overhaul, and if we were to revisit the ordinance separately. And that's my understanding of the situation.
Thank you. And just real brief, the reason why, so the city, city manager can set it on the agenda, the mayor could put it on the agenda, but council has already decided this issue, which means that in order for it to come back, like Councilmember Finley and myself, as far as what is appropriate and not, Robert's Rule says, "We won't be the ones, no matter how much we love or, or want something, that won't be coming from us. That would be put on the agenda by the council members that, that voted no." That, that they have, they, they hold the reins, so to speak. And so I just wanted to point that out, because I'm sure at some point I'll be on the other side, and I don't want to seem like, you know, I'm not putting it on the agenda, but in this particular case, that would have to come from my, my colleagues. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. It's my understanding that because it's a conditional use, there has to be a public hearing or a pub, a, a public discussion. Does that public discussion have to be held at any particular time, in any particular sequence? Because one thing that might hap, be able to happen is that the public hearing could be, could be held while the matter was pending. Is that a possibility?
Again, my understanding is that there is a certain prescribed amount of time between the planning and zoning hearing and the public hearing. A public hearing does hap, couldn't call it a public hearing so much as, as a neighborhood meeting or held by basically the applicant. And that has to happen, it has to be noticed a certain amount of time, and then happen also a certain amount of time before the issue is brought before planning and zoning. That's my understanding of that procedure.
But if you wanted to put it on the agenda and have a discussion on this topic, you would be able to do that, even though it's not currently in the planning and zoning conditional use rezoning process. But again, that is up to, what?
The prevailing.
The prevailing vote, yes. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Can we, at this meeting, in the open forum meeting, ask for it to be put on the agenda, or do we need to wait for a regular meeting to do that?
I would, I, I-
I don't know the, the process. Eugene, can you answer that question?
Technically, yeah, if, I mean, if, if, I will just put it on the agenda at a future time. That would just save us all, and if, if, if the prevailing-
Thank you. Thanks for your help, Senator.
Time out, time out. What I mean is that, I was detecting the consensus. If there's consensus among the prevailing vote, I will do that. If not, I'm not.
I would like it to be put on a future agenda, hopefully the next regular session.
All right, can, we've got three out of four of the prevailing members, so we'll just ask the city manager to bring this back, and we'll have a discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, look at that. Look, look at the public inaction tonight. Hey, no, 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 we, no, no, we can't have clapping. Yeah, no, no, no happiness allowed at government meetings. All right, Mr. Orner?
Well, that was certainly refreshing. Thank you all for that. That makes all of us feel like our voices are being heard, and that action can be taken. So thank you. Martin Orner, 1417 Auburn Court, here to bring up again aircraft noise. I am not here to talk about the, the flight, the, the jumping school noise. We purchased our house over 10 years ago at our current location, and prior to purchasing the house, we made sure that we were outside of the airport influence zone. Since then, the airport, aircraft noise over our home increases along with the passage of time. It's become common that while inside or outside of our home, we have to pause our conversations with our children or our neighbors due to aircraft noise flying directly over our head at any elevation that they choose. The aircraft noise starts around 6:50 in the morning, and especially in pleasant weather, continues without interruption all day long. While the airport manager has spoken with me regarding the noise issue, he has stated that the city hasn't the authority to intervene. I'd like to just read from our current zoning code what this says. The residential zone, this is section 15.03.030. A, general purposes. Residential zoning districts contained in this section are established, designed, and intended to provide a comfortable, healthy, safe, and pleasant environment in which to live, and more specifically, I'm skipping a little bit, to ensure adequate light air privacy and open space for each dwelling, and to protect residents from harmful effects of excessive noise, traffic congestion, and other significant adverse environmental effects. Now we go to the airport influence overlay district wording, and you'll notice that the wording protects the airport. There's nothing here to protect the residential areas. The purpose of the airport influence overlay district are to protect the ongoing ability of the airport to serve the city's transportation needs. I don't see that these individual aircraft owners, flying wherever and whenever, at their convenience and pleasure, is considered a city transportation need, and to protect the public investment in the airport, to minimize risks to public safety and minimize hazards to airport users, to protect property values and restrict incompatible land uses, which I interpret doesn't say anything otherwise, to protect the airport, to promote appropriate land use planning and zoning in the area influenced by the airport. We are influenced by the airport. The application of the special AIC regulation, it says conflicting provisions. If the AIC regulations stated in this section conflict with the provisions of any other chapter or section of the Development Code, or with any other applicable land development regulation, the AIC, the AIC regulations in this section shall apply. Everything else is off the table. It says it right in our code, that we protect the airport over everything else. There is no reference in the wording that I have found that references the AIC map how increased aircraft traffic is changing what should be a change to the airport influence district map. Over time, with more traffic and operations, that's got to increase, it's got to expand. This is just logical stuff. It happens at every airport. In closing, I would certainly appreciate, and I request, that City Council schedule a special meeting regarding the airport and aircraft operations. I'm not talking about the jump guys. From what I've observed, they are following the contours and staying within the airport influence zone area. It's all these other individual guys who are having a good time when it's nice weather, flying directly over our houses at any elevation and at any time. I thank you for listening, and I look forward to hearing about this again.
Hold on one sec, I think somebody has a question for you, or at least a comment. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Just, since we have already started charging a fee for the drop zone of 338,000 feet for the airline, or for, for the jumpers, I'm wondering, I heard from a couple of people that they were, I don't know how to say this, but the airport jumpers are only using the King Air airplane. Have you noticed anything about that? They weren't using the other otters?
I've noticed, I've noticed, I've, I've noticed both aircraft, but as I've stated in my presentation-
It isn't just that one?
It's the individual operators. I don't see, in my, in my experience, while I see the guys jumping, and I hear the otter and the other ones around, it's the individual, single-engine guys especially, who are flying wherever and whenever and at any elevation that they choose.
All right, thank you very much for coming, Mr. Orner.
Thank you, thank you.
Jan DeBain? I knew I was gonna slaughter that one.
That's okay. I'm from 1422 Burlington Drive in Longmont. And also, I want to express my support for the Kocua Volunteer Teenage Treatment Center in the proposed business light industrial zoning area. And I think it is interesting that we allow liquor stores and plot dispenser, pot dispensaries adjacent to residential areas, but we would want to postpone voluntary treatment center for youth due to a minor point in, in the zoning code. And again, I'm in support of, of changing that and doing that sooner rather than later. Part of it is that, that tabling these zoning discussions would be, in effect, end the possibility of the Kocua center being allowed to open and coming into business. So I'm again, just expressing my, my support for, for this treatment center for these youths. Thanks.
Susan Gill?
Councilmembers and Mayor, thanks so much for giving us the time. I speak tonight, I speak for the youth who often have little voice in what we're doing and why we're doing it. For five years, I was the Director of Activities for a nonprofit's events for young women, ages 12 to 18, in cooperation with some young men also. So over five years, I spent thousands and thousands of hours listening to hundreds and hundreds of youth talk about their lives. I'm here to tell you that the childhood that we experienced doesn't exist in this country anymore. There are so many pressures on the youth, most of which have come about because of the social media platforms that form so much of their social interactions, and some of the substances that are available now so easily when they were a little more difficult when I was a child. Many of you will remember that it was not long ago that 700, about 700 youth from high schools in this area were found involved in a porn ring, and some of those suffered from porn addiction. That was, what, a year and a half ago, maybe two? I have spent hours listening to the youth and their struggles. I've listened to students who have had to change schools to get away from friends that they feel are pressuring them. I've listened to students who are suicidal because they could see no other way out. They would rather look for a long-term solution to a short-term problem because they see no other way. During that time, I studied the development of the teenage brain. The teenage brain is, is in the process of pruning down to only the most necessary pathways. So all the pathways, neural networks that were created in childhood are being pruned down to the most important pathways that will be used for decades. And because of this, any addiction that is formed during the teen years is infinitely harder to break than an addiction that is formed during adult years. I urge you not to delay. Thank you, Ms. Peck, for putting it back on the agenda. If you look at what Mr. Huey has done in the Midwest, I would believe he runs a tight ship. He's talked to me about some of the service activities that he wants these youth to do. He's talked to me about the importance of letting youth form new friendships with new people that also have their same desire to break away and build a newer, better, safer life for themselves. We cannot afford, we cannot afford to be a community of ostriches, because the teenagers that are in school today will be, will be our doctors tomorrow, will be the prison inmates of tomorrow. We really cannot afford to delay. I would urge you to do whatever you have to do for zoning to make sure that the Kocua facility can get started as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gill. Mike Schnatzmeyer?
I'm Mike Schnatzmeyer, 12001 Twilight Street in Longmont. Good evening, Mayor Bagley, and council, and new council members. For five years before the epic 2013 flood event, I tried for warning of this clear and imminent $300 million threat to the city and its residents. The flood threat continues to exist until we fully complete flood mitigation work underway. But I'm here to speak about another even larger and even more imminent threat to the city, our long-term fiscal health, which is at risk from what is nationally coming to be known as the infrastructure crisis. In the spring of 2016, author and speaker Joe Minicozzi presented at the Longmont Museum. I urge every council member and city leader to watch the YouTube videotaping of that event. In short, his message was this: Low-density car-oriented sprawl creates enormous unmet long-term fiscal liabilities for infrastructure replacement. In contrast, denser smart growth development of walkable mixed-use neighborhoods promotes jobs and business creation and revenues that that brings. Boulder gets this, as any good-to-great city would know. For years, their policies have been to maximize revenues, i.e. business and job creation, creating over 47,000 net incoming jobs to the city every day. At the same time, they're, they're effectively exporting and minimizing the liability of housing-related infrastructure costs to surrounding cities like Longmont. Local affordable housing is needed, but in addressing this problem, we need to be smart. Suburban sprawl comprised of mono-use, single-family residential car-oriented housing projects driven purely by for-profit developers is creating a huge, enormous, long-term liability for Longmont. for Longmont and is worsening traffic, pollution, and other problems. Developing higher-density mixed-use walkable and bikeable neighborhoods designed for people and placemaking is a far better solution. That is, we need smart growth, not dumb growth, to survive in both a digital information-age economic revolution and in the era of climate change. Car-oriented developments fail seniors. They fail the young, the poor, and marginalized residents that don't drive. If you want affordable housing, build a walkable, bikeable, denser, mixed-use, smart-growth city. Living without a car can free up to nine thousand dollars per year in household budgets that can be used towards housing, healthcare, education, food, and other beneficial uses. If you want senior housing, build a walkable city. Seniors should be able to leave their, their compounds and complexes to engage, walk out of those, and walk out and engage with the, and contribute to the larger community. If you want social equity, build a walkable city. For Andreas Dwaney, the designer of Prospect, it should be a basic human right to be able to live without having to own a car, to merely survive and get your basic human needs met. If you want an attractive city to millennials, to create jobs and start up businesses they bring, build a walkable and bikeable, smart-growth, mixed-use city. Car-free living and spontaneous interactions of urban life reflect what the millennials seek today. If you want to have a healthy city with less traffic, build a walkable city. Car-oriented developments created more traffic and infrastructure costs long-term. Walkable and bikeable cities are healthier and have reduced traffic. If you want to bring fast racks to town, build a walkable and bikeable city. It helps create the densities and critical massive users needed to empower fast racks and the business model to bring it to town. If you want to address global climate change, build a walkable and bikeable city. Carbon footprint of urban areas is typically about half that of urban sprawl when you consider transportation and building, building energy efficiency uses. If you want to reduce tax burdens on our cities and create a long-term economically sustainable city, build a walkable, bikeable, denser, smart-growth city. We need to stop empowering urban sprawl that creates long-term liabilities for the city and contributes to global climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnatzmeyer. Ken and Bev Huey. And then just so, keep in mind, you will have between ten and fifteen minutes at some point on an agenda here in the near future, so, I'm not your lawyer, but I'd say be really careful what you say.
Yeah, well done, and, and, you know, speed it up too, right? I mean, seriously-
No, no, not saying that, I'm just saying-
Well, I'm okay, I'm, I'm great. Let me say first, um, thank you. Before things went the way they did, I had already been watching each of you and watching the way that you are giving such attention and respect. I know that there must be issues that you care less than others about or more, but the attention and respect that you're giving everybody that stands at this podium is really, really moving, so thank you very much. It feels tremendous. I, I want to speak to the Council and just be on record, so this is short, because really we've kind of made some decisions and we're moving in directions. That's terrific. Uh, but as part of that, I want to thank supporters who have shown up today, some that I just met today. I had people contact me. I only reached out in two venues to say, hey, you know, if you want to say something, say something, and it, uh, others came to me and asked how they could help, and it turned into a groundswell that is, that you're seeing today. So, some are already, have left, four, five have already left, but those that are here in support of Kokoah and this zoning change, the potential, would you please just stand? I really want to say thanks to these folks. It's an amazing, amazing thing. I'm, I'm moved beyond words. The neighborhood meeting that Councilman Rodriguez spoke about was publicized. I personally got every single address of even renters within a thousand feet, which is what's required, of the building. I stamped every darn envelope, put everybody's name, got them to the city, they were mailed out. It was, I also put signs in front of the building. Nobody came to that meeting. It was canceled, and I don't know if there was notification, so, you know, I was told by Mr. Schumacher that there are ways to streamline it, and I would just urge, please, might we streamline it? Here's, there's a couple of issues. We're into this eight months, you're only seeing a part of it. I can start over. We'll, we'll get this done. And if I have to go somewhere else, I'll go somewhere else and I'll get it done, but I'll be at least eight months down the road from right now. Let me tell you what eight months looks like, and I'm not kidding about this. One of the first girls that I ever worked with had an addiction and an eating disorder that went with it. And she arrived at a facility, was my first job out of graduate school as PhD, and she came with an IV drip and having to walk around in the halls of this facility, a residential treatment facility, and that was what was keeping her alive. And the doctor was very clear, she had gotten into us, gotten treatment, with about a week to spare where she would have been dead otherwise. It, it really is that important, right? So, we worked with her, it was a very difficult process. She had a real hard time, it's been fifteen years now, but she made amazing gains. The end of the day, she left. The, the amazing news is that seven years ago, she came and visited my program in Missouri to tell the kids how it was possible to survive and change. She is an attorney. She graduated from law school and worked over in China for five years and just got home with her husband and is a functioning, contributing member of society because of the work that my team did. Not me, my team. I'm forever grateful for that. But that week, I'm, I'm not trying to just be dramatic, seriously, if we take an extra five months or four months or three months, we can't disobey any kind of law, but to the extent that we can speed up the process to a yes or a no, if it's a no, I need to know that quickly because every single week, we lose kids. Truly, they die. This kills people. And so, the groundwork that we've done already, I just don't want to redo it or start the clock again and thereby actually lose the life of a child. Thank you very much for listening to me. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Dr. Huey. Bev Huey?
I'm Beverly Huey, fourteen oh five Clover Creek Drive. And, um, first, I want to thank you. I think that we've already accomplished what we really wanted to happen tonight, and that was just to get back on the agenda, because I think everything, every single one of you wants the same thing that we want, and it's just a matter of how we do it. And I appreciate that so much. I'll still share some of my thoughts with you, though. Like I said, we're not here to talk about the good of what Kokoah could do necessarily. We'll get, it sounds like we'll get that chance now because we're on the agenda, and I'm grateful for that. I know that you already see the benefits and the need of having such a facility. I actually have confidence that this Council would approve Kokoah eventually, and unfortunately, as spoken about tonight, we don't have a lot of time to postpone this decision. I understand why the City Council would want more time to make sure that everything is covered, but, um, the facility that seems so perfect for this, um, we're running out of time on our opportunity to enter that building, and so that's why we're trying to really streamline the process and to get this, um, this underway. I just also wanted to let you know how much thought has gone into deciding, uh, for our family personally, to move to Longmont. We didn't just take a map and throw a dart at it and decide to come here. It was very thought out, and I have three children, one whom we uprooted as a senior in high school to come to this area for a lot of different reasons. We want to be here, we like Longmont, we see a need to be here, and, um, we really want to make this happen. We've handpicked this area. We were able to establish a residential treatment center for troubled youth in Missouri where we moved from, and we learned a lot in the process. It was a very successful place that helped a lot of children, and again, we're on the agenda, so we'll get to tell you about all the benefits, not only for the kids that we're helping, but for the community, the jobs that are, um, created, the community atmosphere of coming together. And the very name that we chose for Kokoah Academy, Kokoah Treatment Center, is a Hawaiian word that means a community coming together to help an individual, and that is what we are all about. Again, I just want to thank you that we will get to have our day to, um, talk about it and to try to get this approved. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Huey. I'm gonna take a risk here. Denise Fronjian? Am I even close? That close? All right, Denise, how do you pronounce that last name?
Fronjian.
Fronjian.
Yeah, yeah, you got it pretty close. Well, it's nice to meet you all, new Council, new Mayor, thank you. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of-
Just pull the mic close to your lips. Get it right up there, so they can hear you at home and all that good stuff.
Okay, I'm, I'm here to speak about, um, our cruelty to animals ordinance, that it's lacking, um, or needs to be updated, it's out of date. And I would like to see it be, to be including tethering restrictions. And, um, I wrote some notes. Dogs should never be tethered twenty-four-seven, and I figured an average lifespan of, um, ten years probably for an outside dog averages out to being like eighty-eight thousand hours staked to an object. So, tethering restrictions, I feel, need to include no tethering of a dog under six months, because we've witnessed eight-week-olds tethered. So, to include no tethering of a dog under six months and also in their senior years, and to be brought indoors during extreme weather conditions. The late-night barking is also annoying to neighbors. And I'd like to see restrictions of no tethering between, well, not just me, but people, other people I've spoken with, but restrictions of no tethering between ten PM and seven AM, which is Longmont's curfew anyway. And then for daytime, no tethering for more than four hours at a given time. And this can all be enforced by public awareness, and I have a, I could say a whole lot more, but I'm not going to. It would be very boring. But anyway, it, thank you all for listening and for your time. I hope we can make this happen in twenty eighteen.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
I, I empathize with you. Why would you ever tether a dog for just four hours?
At a given time.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, why would an owner, I mean, I've got two dogs I just love to death, one's Pitbull, one's Little Frenchie.
I know, we're in a dog community.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, my question is, wha- what, what do you think a person would, what, if, why would they want to tether a dog for even four hours? What I'm saying is that-
Well, for some people, they need to tether their dog for, maybe they don't have fencing.
Got it. So, in other words-
I don't know. You know, some people are, are bound and determined to tether their dog, and I witness it, I witness four that have to live like that. And the people just seeing, that's their choice of how to confine their animals.
Because I'd never tether my dogs.
So, that's why I'm throwing in four hours at a given time for those people who feel it necessary to tether their dog.
Okay.
And even four hours, I think, is too much. Yeah.
I'd agree with you, that was the point of my question.
Yeah, I would rather see no tethering, you know, and there's a place in Oregon, it's called Fences for Fido, for people who don't have fencing and don't, cannot afford fencing. So, as a community, they've gotten together to provide, um, the labor and the material to help people, help their dogs. It's really for their dogs. So, I would really like to see this happen in twenty eighteen.
Mayor Protem Christiansen?
Do you know if there's a length, sorry? Is there a length of the tether, too? I lived next door to some very bad people, and they had two dogs tethered, each one had a tether about a foot and a half.
Has to be six feet minimum.
Yeah.
Six feet minimum.
Okay, so we do have something like that in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we do.
That's good to know.
And it'd be best to put them, if you have to tether them, put them on a trolley or a pulley, you know, give them some exercise, some freedom.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
You bet.
And I forgot how to pronounce your last name, I always said-
Fronjian.
Liz Fronjian. Liz Gobail or Goble? I think it's Gobail. Gobail? Liz?
Yes. Hello, Mayor Bagley and the Councilmembers. Uh, I'm here to support the updating our cruelty to animal law to include tethering restrictions. There is a lot more that Denise could say, uh, could have said. One of them is also to our benefit, when you have these dogs, and maybe, Polly, you know of this, if they're out there twenty-four-seven and they're never got, taken off the, the leash, they urinate and defecate in one spot. That odor comes to your neighbors, that gets into soil, the urine, and any bacteria, because you can pick up bacteria from soil. That's one thing that Denise didn't mention, but I think she had it written down. Also, by doing that tethering at night, you are subjecting the dogs to very dangerous conditions in that they can be attacked by other animals, such as raccoons, skunks, foxes, and many of them are rabies carriers and distemper carriers. These dogs basically are just sitting ducks. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Mike Fixaco?
Thank you. I'm here to support on the tethering. I have a lot of other stuff, but I believe that, that's, takes too long. On the tethering, it's very stressful to the animal. Growing up in other states that I have lived at, I've had one break his tether and had to end up shooting it because it was coming after me, attacked. So, to me, tethering psychologically harms the dog, makes them fearful, and they go after whatever's in front of them, and it's not gonna stop them. I was, I grew up where you let your dogs run free country. Here, you can't, I understand that, but you can have your fences and let them run back there. You don't have to tether them. Tethering is probably the most cruellest punishment there is for an animal. As Native Americans, animals are related to us. They're a part of our life, they're our friends, they help us. And by doing that, we're degrading them, disrespecting them, their freedom as well. We should have something in line that would make it unlawful to keep them tethered more than four hours a day, but, like I said, some people at work that don't have a, can't afford a daycare for the dog or boarding, they tether them. But some, there should be laws saying that there is a certain amount of time. Some will be eight, some could be four, who knows? But either way, it'd be like you guys having to be chained to your desk twenty-four-seven, can't go home, can't go to the bathroom, you know, can't get to the water faucet or coffee pot, you know? So, that's the way I see things. I look at things differently than a lot of people do. It's hard to visualize what it would be like to be like that. Growing up, I've been in jail for a lot of things, drinking, raising hell as a kid, but I learned to appreciate my freedom once I was free, and animals- But I learned to appreciate my freedom once I was free, and animals should have that same freedom, even though we are in a city where it's, man has kind of taken over, and we've got people that love their dogs. Then you've got those that just want the dogs to be there, and they say they got it there for protection, but you've got on a log chain that weighs 20, 30 pounds dragging it around, hurting them. Not getting them in from the cold like last night and the day before, or in the hot summers, when it's, even with the ceremonies I do, it gets pretty tough. And they're not having water once, once a day and fed once a day. So I've seen dogs that's been out chained in these kind of conditions for the last 18 years since I've been here, different places, and no matter what we do, the animal controls, hands are tied because there's no set law about the tethering. All it is is that if they can have cover, food, water, and shade, that's it. So, but I've never seen some of these dogs taken in, if they are, they just got a, probably about a quarter-inch plywood box covering them. They're in their own feces, their own urine, and the people come out and so to remove it, they just take the hose and water it down and get it into the soil. And you can smell it from, depending on which direction the wind's blowing. So hopefully, this is something that a lot of people might have concern and might think about wanting to do, too, in joint, in investing in this kind of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fixico. Eugene, would it be possible just to get a, could you just send out the applicable city ordinance that pertains to cruelty to animals and/or tethering? And maybe we could start there, and just city council could review it, and then kind of go from there? Thanks. See, yet again, making some progress. All right. Jeffrey Justice?
Jeffrey Justice, 1503 Lamplighter Drive in Longmont. Last Tuesday, I came and spoke about the horrific dog attack and dog death, December 5th, at the 1600 block of Metropolitan and Ward 1. Won't go into that, but since I spoke, I really want to thank the city manager for speaking to me at the break during the meeting and take his interest in that, and my questions about ordinances and such. Councilmember Rodriguez called me back since he's the, what do you call it, the roving rep or whatever, because our Ward 1, we lost him to the mayor.
Sorry, missed point.
But he answered my question in absolute total detail, to the point where he would be the authority on this particular issue that I'm bringing up. And it appears that the ordinance for a loose dog that attacks a leash dog, someone who's just walking their dog on public streets, minding their own business, being attacked by a dog and killed, that the ordinance doesn't treat that any, doesn't even treat it as seriously as a dog that bites a person, and that there is, the quarantine isn't like it would be if the dog bit a person. I think an attack like that is horrific, especially a loose dog attacking a person walking their dog legally on the street, minding their own business. That's a horrific attack, and I don't know how to change ordinances. I mean, you know, I've, I got all the animal ordinances, I saw what they say. City manager talked to me, councilmember Rodriguez talked to me about it. It does, I would like to see the ordinance modified reasonably, that if there's a horrific dog attack on another dog resulting in very serious injury or death, that that dog faces a quarantine, whether it be at Longmont Humane, a approved facility, or at home, but something to keep the public safe until that case is cleared in court. The court case for that is February 22nd. I'll make sure to go to see how this turns out, and that, it may end up being a fair verdict there, but in the meantime, that dog doesn't face the quarantine that a dog that, like, bit a person would face. So I don't know if that, to me, that doesn't keep the public safe. That dog should be monitored, quarantined, and it's not, from all the research I've done. So I just leave it to you. I don't know what else to do. You do.
Would you have put that dog down?
Personally, no.
Okay.
Personally, no, and I don't, would never support any breed-specific legislation or size restriction. That's why I say reasonable. It's just something to tighten it up, you know?
I was just talking about specifically if the dog, regardless.
Well, it would, you know, it would depend. My opinion, first of all, no, as a, as a dog lover, it would have to be, a judge would have to decide that based on behavior analysis, but personally, no. That's not what I'm going for in any of these talks I give. It's just, let's just do something reasonable to keep that dog secured under quarantine and being evaluated. Maybe the living conditions in that house aren't so good. It lives with another dog that it fights with. The others, things I can't control, but maybe you can. So I just want to see something reasonable done.
I was hoping you would say something like that, so.
Right.
Good job. Good job. All right. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Hello, Mr. Justice. Good to see you again. I've had some further conversations after our previous conversation, and I feel that it was conveyed to me that there's kind of a miscommunication as far as verbiage is concerned, as far as the quarantine is concerned. With animal-to-human interaction, the quarantine is specifically about rabies, and so they will do a quarantine to, to monitor the, the animal for rabies, whereas they do still, in an animal-on-animal attack specifically, constrain the dog to its property, its specific property, with a bunch of regulations that are connected to the, the citation, to the, the ticket, which are not taken off until after the case is resolved. That is, that is through further communication. What I would say is some sort of irregularity maybe in verbiage where the, the animal is constrained to its property in concept of quarantine, whereas the, the true statement and usage of the word quarantine is specific to rabies. But I do feel that there may be some things that we can do to, to help increase safety as far as animal-on-animal attacks are concerned. But just to give you an update on further conversations I've had since we spoke on the phone.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Christensen?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, for clarifying that. I, I, I think that, you know, this is a terrible incident because I know that woman loved her dog very much, and I know the, the guy who has the, the big dog, also, he and his family love that, that dog, too, and I'm glad to hear that you wouldn't just automatically have that dog killed. I think that we could probably, it would be a good idea for us, maybe while we're looking at one dog problem, to look at some others, which is specifically that if you restrict that dog to being monitored somehow and not leaving its property, it might be possible to see that there are some problems in that home, or there are some problems, maybe the animal has some health problems. But in any case, a, a dog who does that is, needs retraining, first of all, and that should be maybe mandatory retraining of a dog. And I, I'm not sure how we would do that, but certainly, we've seen all these TV shows, and dogs can learn things, maybe not my dog, but other, you know, smarter dogs can learn things, and certainly, the, the most basic thing a dog needs to learn is not to attack, even though that's a natural instinct for them. But having been attacked by, by a tiny little dog when I was just walking down the street, and having my father, who also loved animals, being attacked by a German shepherd when he was just walking down the street, I can tell you, this happens to, this happens all the time, is dogs get out, they roam around, they get confused, they don't know what they're doing, but we can't let them be roaming around. So first of all, that dog needs to be confined so it won't hurt anybody else again, and then that needs to be evaluated. We can't just leave that up to the owner because it likely won't happen. So could we also discuss some of these kind of confinement things and the way we treat these incidents of dog, dogs attacking dogs?
Eugene, could you include that particular ordinance as well? We got a yes.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this up to us again.
Right. I appreciate the cooperation and all the feedback that I've been given. Thanks a lot.
We'll be doing some dog talking. All right. It's, we've been going for an hour and a half, so, Georgetta Johnston, we're gonna go ahead and break for five minutes, and then we'll come back and we'll pick up with you. Is that okay? All right, great. All right, great. I know, but they pronounced, it was written Johnston.
Uh-oh, somebody wrote it wrong.
All right.
Johnston.
All right.
Anyway, good evening, Mayor and Councilman, most of yous I know. Georgiana Johnston at 320 Homestead Parkway, Longmont, Colorado. So I want to say that the people are trying to get this thing going to help people. That's wonderful. Lord bless them, Lord bless them, Lord bless them. So people came to the council complaining about the suite things, the suites that were going on that was endangering other people that lived there, serious drugs. I was going to come a long time ago because the paper's been going on those things like that, but I haven't been able to. I know that some people that lived there were saying it was not safe there because people were doing the meth drugs and other drugs in apartments. So the LHA had to get extra people to protect the building because of what was going on. Because certain people acted like they don't have to go by Longmont Housing Management rules, the police department is there to protect us. Now, I'm concerned that when the Director of Operations, Crystal, went in on site with the supervisor and police to check out the apartments, that people acted like they had something to hide and carried on. I know that this has been going on and they've made some settlements and stuff. But I live in an apartment, and if they need to come into mine, I've got nothing to hide. So it doesn't bother me. But I know people there personally that were afraid of the drugs. And I also hear now that there are some apartments there that were used with meth, and now it's going to cost them thousands of dollars to straighten those apartments out into suites. Crystal is a caring, kind, listening person that never got unkind, working with people that needed affordable housing. My husband worked with many city boards and always spoke highly of her. And I got to know her through helping people and us. I live in the affordable housing, and my lease says management has the right to come into the apartment at any time if they suspect something that's wrong. I do have a problem for them, I do not have a problem for them coming in and checking mine. Rules. Now, what I'm really, I'm really troubled over this. It's hit the paper, 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 and I know that I can't do anything about it. But you know what? You as the ones over us, we want a good city to live in. We want protection. I've never drugged, and I don't drink, never in my life. Of course, I'm not fond of these breweries and marijuana situations, very dangerous and killers. But you know what? We need good leaders that are over our city that care about people. And in like these apartments and like this one here, I know that people are there that maybe have some really severe handicaps. Where I live, they also do too. But one night at 5:00 in the morning, they had some people come to where we are that were on drugs and tried to get in. And sometimes they can sneak in there, but sometimes people live in there, live in the apartments, and try to get by with stuff like that. Now, this to me is very upsetting over her. She came and was over our building, some others from our building had to go over to the suites and babysit because of so much danger there. You know, I don't know, this is just not, it's just real troubling to me, that innocent people, innocent people were, and the police. My husband has worked with the police for years and years and years. He was a chaplain. And you know what? I don't try to break laws myself. They stop me, and I'm doing something wrong, you know what? Then it's okay, but I try my best to go by rules. So this is really, really troubling to me. It's hit the paper over and over and over, and I think it's just so troubling myself, so troubling. I want you all to think about it because, you know, it is. And the housing and the people on the board, her and different ones, I've known for years and years, and my husband has worked with them. And you know what? We're people that should stand behind people, caring about people. And this is really, I'm a person that, you know, what I want is what's right and honest, and a good city, and protection, and people working with people. And I'm listening to about different subjects tonight, which is good, you know, because that's what we're about. Lord bless you precious people.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
For listening to me. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope that you're thinking about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Judith Blackburn.
I see, I saw you snuck in the back.
Come on up.
Good evening, Council. This forum idea is kind of a new one to me, and I didn't know how much would be questions and answers, or how much would just be you listening yet again. Judith Blackburn, 3724 Oakwood Drive. I want to give a shout out to a city agency that is doing a superb job, and that is our senior center here in Longmont. I am so proud of being associated with that place, and I think you should be too. Our senior center is by far the most active, the most comprehensive, the most efficiently run senior center of any up and down the front range. I don't know if you're aware of what a good value you're getting for dollars spent, because that staff is so efficient and such hard workers. Every four times a year, they put out a huge document like this, full of their programs and services. And it's everything from field trips to Spanish lessons, to history programs, to dancing like we had at the Martin Luther King celebrations on Monday. And Mayor Bagley, I thought your proclamation was excellent and nicely delivered Monday. That was a pleasure. But this senior center staff, I remember going to Rhythm on the River a couple of years ago, and almost all the volunteers there were employees of the senior center, kind of keeping that wonderful event afloat with their extra time after the long hours they put in. So if we get an opportunity to recognize with an award or proclamation sometime in the future, I hope we'll single out the senior center. It's, I mean, they take people 55 and over, so that's probably about half the people that live in Longmont, and I think it's great. Another thing I wanted to talk about in my five minutes is, it's more of a question. I'm unsure where the mapping of flow lines, gathering lines, pipelines to do with gas under our city is. In other words, I know we had a study, I mean, the governor of Colorado asked the COGCC to do it for the whole state, and I know that hasn't happened. And I went down last Monday to their hearings to kind of complain about that and ask what was happening, and also to say that I'm frightened. I feel like other explosions such as happened in Firestone could happen here easily or elsewhere. I understand that such inspections as they've done, they've already found 400 so-called closed pipelines or flow lines, gathering lines, I don't even know the difference among all those. But 400 is a small percentage of how many they tested, but it's a lot, it's a large number if each one of those is a potential explosion or could be. And so I need a little clarification, maybe it's just work I need to do and I haven't found where to look it up, on how we stand with that here in Longmont. So that was one of my requests. Also, COGCC is accepting written comments through the 19th, which is Friday, and I hope people listening to this will send in something because there were, I thought, quite, not very many people there in Denver on Monday to testify. And they did invite elected officials to come, and I looked at the agenda, I didn't stay for the whole day, and I didn't see Longmont on there. So I hope that we are going to make our contribution to the urgency of that mapping thing, which is still only the first step in monitoring and remediating anything that's wrong. So thank you for the opportunity here.
So all you need to do is shoot me an email, we can do a proclamation.
Good.
So let's do that. Second, Dale, what is the current status on the mapping of the flow lines and the gathering lines? Because I mean, you're the guy that knows.
Ah, thank you. Mayor Bagley and members of council, the city right now, in the urbanized area of the city, in Boulder County, there's one gathering line. It's on the eastern side of the city. It comes across the Ryder property, and then it goes to the, sort of the alignment of the power transmission line that's running north-south out on the east side of the city. And then eventually it makes its way back over, back into Weld County and then heads east. Out on city open space property, out in Weld County, there's any number of flow lines associated with the active wells that are still out there. There's about 10 or 13 active wells. So we are familiar with the gathering lines that are certainly within the urbanized area of the city, and we do have those mapped in Public Works and Natural Resources, and be happy to share that with you. So I think we're actually in pretty good shape there, knowing where those are.
And then, so is there a chance that gathering line would be closed?
Correct, Mayor Bagley. We are, it is our interest as a city to have that gathering line abandoned, properly abandoned as soon as we can in the future. It's currently serving a single well out on near Union Reservoir, that if that well were to be plugged and abandoned, which we do, oh, sorry, I'm not, I'm not doing it right. So if we can get that well plugged and abandoned, then we would be able to decommission that gathering line.
Thank you. Councilmember Pack.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Dale, are those maps available on the website, or is it something you have to send to Judith per an email?
If we have to send it to Judith, we will, but I do believe we ought to be able to get those up onto our website if they're not already there. I just don't know off the top of my head if it's out there.
I don't either, yeah.
But I'll check.
And then you can tell us what the URL is for that so we can publish it.
Correct.
So people can go look. Okay, thank you.
And lastly, is there any, do we have any plans to map the ones that are out there east on open space?
We have many of the gathering lines mapped out there. The flow lines, we're familiar with generally where they are, certainly on the active wells, which is what the condition is out there on the open space properties, because those generally are between the wellhead and the separator and the tanks, which is a sort of a confined area. I do believe there's probably more work that could be done out there, though, and I do believe it would be wise for those to get mapped, and I think it is wise for the state to require it. And to answer the question, the city is actively involved in that rulemaking process and submitting our comments in collaboration with Boulder County and some of the other cities in Boulder County.
If we were to, I mean, my understanding was that consensus was we wanted those mapped, right? So I mean, that, so let's just, I guess, I mean, we could put it on agenda and talk about it, but...
I think we understand that, and, you know, the process of this, of city mapping a private infrastructure is not as straightforward as it is, for instance, with a public infrastructure.
Got it.
So we have to be able to work with the operators in order to get that information.
All right, great.
I still think legislation would be good.
Great, thank you. All right, Stan Schowers.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman. Thank you for your service, using your time and your talents to represent us who maybe don't have so much time and definitely don't have the talent. Thank you for being so considerate about the zoning laws. I remember many years ago, my parents, I guess they would say they were stabbed in the back by their city council with respect to some zoning laws that were changed, and it adversely affected their property values. And since then, I've always felt that that's one of the more sacred duties of the city council. So I just want to say that I appreciate your careful deliberation on considering the Kukua Treatment Center. I'd like to make just a couple comments to maybe ease your minds in reevaluating and hopefully expediting rezoning to support that facility. I live at Stan Schowers, 2520 Lanion Drive. I'm two blocks from a fire department, and I'm four blocks from a hospital, and I like that. There's a house down the road from us, less than a block away, that nearly burned down. It's a good feeling having that there. I think that we shouldn't be afraid to have a mental health facility nearby. Maybe we don't really think of equate a mental health facility to a hospital, but if you think about it, they serve about the same purpose. My daughter, she's an assistant supervisor at a facility, and she was very, very, she has witnessed the success that happens in those facilities, and as a, and as a student, she's learned, you know, the statistics of what happens when you have intervention as a youth as opposed to not getting that. And the communities are better, right? Because the people that don't get the attention that they need end up with bigger problems later in life. And so I see this as a positive, and I see it as worth the risk of expediting the process so that this can be a, so this thing can happen for the good of the community and, of course, for those people that so desperately need this help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schowers. Christine Schowers.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Thank you for being here tonight and listening to all of us. My name is Christine Schowers, and I have lived in Longmont for almost 15 years. I love this city. It's a great city. We moved here from a bigger city. We moved here from San Jose, and coming here to a smaller city was welcoming for me. I love raising my children here, and I really am grateful that you have thought about putting this residential treatment center back on the agenda because, as my husband said, we have a daughter who works at a residential facility in another state. It's not for Mr. Huey, but her and I talk on the phone a lot, and we talk about these teens that she works with and what they suffer from. She works with a wide range of problems with them. They suffer from different disorders such as drug addiction, depression, eating disorders, PTSD, suicidal ideation, anxiety, and even social media addiction. And these teens go through intense searches and checks before they enter the facility, and they're not allowed to leave the site, and they have staff there helping them and watching them. And she was telling me about the therapy that they get. They get so many hours of therapy, and these are teens whose parents are searching for help, and they need help for their children. As you've heard earlier, teenagers are very impressionable. I have two currently at home now, and I, as a parent, would be grateful if anything were to ever happen where I needed a facility to take them to, that there would be access to that. And so we do know, and my daughter has told me this, that if a teen gets help early on, they are able to transition into adulthood better. And the program is designed to save families and their teenagers. And the program is designed to save families and their teenagers, and it saves lives. These teenagers will learn to develop healthy relationships in the future and become responsible citizens. And isn't that what we want, here in Longmont especially? And I believe that you have made the right decision to put this back on the table. I don't know that I will be here for the bigger meeting, but I just wanted to go on the record as saying that I think this is a smart move for Longmont. And I think that for parents, it would be a comfort to them. And I thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you very much. Gordon Pedro.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for providing this opportunity for us to speak for five minutes instead of three, even though I don't plan to take the full five minutes. This first statement I will make will not be a surprise to you. Traffic congestion has become a real community issue. County Line Road, Highway 119, Over Road, Nelson Road, are just a few of the streets that flunk any reasonable standard in the eyes of drivers for several hours of each weekday. I believe it is time that the city council adopt a reasonable, measurable transportation standard that will be applied to every development application going forward. I would like to point out a real example of a budding traffic problem coming your way. While reading minutes of a recent P&amp;Z meeting, it came to my attention that an application for annexation is under review for approximately 100 acres west of Hoover, south of Rogers Road, and north of Nelson. I'm sure you'll recognize that two of those three streets were named in the beginning of my statement about being congested for several hours each day, weekday. In the P&amp;Z minutes of the HMS annexation application, I came across an appalling statement that seems to explain why increasing traffic congestion has become a nightmare. The appalling statement came from the consultant presenting the application for HMS. And I don't have the exact quote, so this is paraphrasing, but it's went along the lines of "all transportation systems movements will meet the city's standard at Level D in the long run." In the long run. Not one member of the P&amp;Z seemed concerned with the statement, since none ask a question such as, "What is the definition of the long run? What is going on, what is going to happen to our community in the short run? Is the long run 2040, like the fast-track train, or is it 2050? When the annexation application comes to the city council, I hope you will ask the questions that should be asked. Furthermore, if the answers you receive are not compatible with the best interests of your residents, I hope you will reject the annexation, since annexation is at the discretion of the city council. I believe you will soon be facing a political revolt by your residents if you continue to approve application after application without adequate infrastructure to support the impacts." So that was my original comments. But now, since Dale made some comments per your request about gathering lines, and I just wanted to point out a few details that he didn't point out. That gathering line that he described goes to the Ryder Well and then south along that utility easement, very, very, very close to a middle school, very close to a subdivision, and it serves one well. I would hope that this city council would take it as a very, very high priority to work with whomever you need to work with to get that gathering line abandoned and remove that potential threat to our community as soon as you possibly can. Thank you for your time.
Hold on, Gordon. We are, hopefully, and then, but my question is, what does it mean, what do you, the quote you gave about the annexation, that all transportation's in the, all transportation systems in the long run will be met to a what D standard, a level D?
A Level D standard.
What is Level D?
Which, well, that's one level above Level F.
Oh, okay. Oh, I get it.
In transportation, and F is flunking everything.
Okay, so it's not like some special plan. It's actually a traditional D.
That is a standard.
Barely passing.
That is accepted. It's in your development code. But what I'm concerned about is, in the long run, all of us who took business classes or economics classes, and professors would talk about, well, a business is going to really succeed in the long run. However, it has to survive the short run before it ever gets to the long run. And I just keep playing that in my head as I'm thinking about, in the long run, it could be a horrible congestion for all of us until that long run is met.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, come back. Councilmember Pack.
Thank you. Gordon, I was just going to say thanks for bringing that up. That's always been, for the two years I've been on council, that has been a sticking point with every single development that has come in, is that it seems like we, the city, just accepts the developers' traffic study. And especially the most recent one was out on County Line One, when we were putting this huge development out there, and I asked, when are we going to reevaluate County Line and widen it? And it's in the very, it's not in the foreseeable future at all, but we're putting tons of apartments there and loading cars onto it. So I thank you for bringing this up. I do think it is a problem with the way we are approaching developments, that we don't have better traffic studies that actually meet up with the needs of our city rather than the needs of the development alone. So thank you for that.
Well, I would just add that the traffic study is going to basically give you the counts that are going to be on the roads, but the infrastructure has to be planned and developed to coincide with when that, otherwise, the traffic study is going to say, yeah, it's going to have so many cars per day. But unless you're programming and have the infrastructure there, all those cars are going to be congested.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. And I actually have a question, not for Gordon, but for the city staff, which is, why don't we get a second opinion on the traffic studies as opposed to accepting the developer's analysis?
Yeah, Dale.
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Martin, the city staff does review the developer's traffic study. It has to meet our requirements, so we don't just get them and accept them. They have to be reviewed, and many times they go back to be done and redone.
Councilmember Martin.
And our traffic engineer reviews them.
As opposed to an independent second opinion, was my question.
I, what I would say is that certainly the city could farm that work out to another consultant to have it looked at. I do believe our staff is quite capable of looking at a traffic study unless, of course, it's of a magnitude or a complexity that, you know, would be beyond their capabilities. But I, and I think we have that option, frankly. If something comes in that is so, so large or difficult, I think we can always farm it out for a consultant to take a look at it. But, you know, we'd take the council's direction. If you, if you believe that you would want us to do that typically, that's certainly something that could be considered.
Okay.
Just keep the floor.
Yeah. I'm just wondering whether, how far the analysis goes. I mean, you're going to begin with some data about arrivals and departures and, you know, trip frequency and stuff that is provided by the developer, and what reason do we believe, do we have to believe that that's a correct analysis? You know, even correct premises? I'm just, I'm just wondering how independent a review really is as opposed to, you know, taking the occupancy and the development and existing traffic and starting from scratch.
So one of the things I would offer, suggest, is a couple of things. One is, we could certainly, at a study session, come back and have Tyler Stamey, our traffic engineer, talk with you about those very issues. We could also re-present the city's master road plan that shows the build-out of the city's entire transportation system between now and 2035. Some of you have seen that, some of you have not seen that because you weren't on council at the time that the study was completed. So maybe it would be good to have a transportation discussion night to look at all those issues. And if that would be helpful, we can certainly plan to do that as well. And then you could ask the traffic experts, Tyler, those kinds of questions.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. If there's consensus, we should plan to do that. And maybe I would like to add the topic of a mitigation plan, because in addition to the congestion areas that Gordon mentioned, there are a few more on the southeast side that really deserve to be listed, too.
Several areas, yeah.
Yeah.
Be happy to do that. And we've also found it to be really effective to sometimes do those as pre-session discussions where we can really get into the details of things around the table, and council can really grill us and question us. So we'll do it however y'all want to do it, but let us know, and we'll get that scheduled.
We could even do it some Friday morning.
There you go.
Real soon now.
Thanks.
Councilmember Finley, did you have a comment or question?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would just say that education on what actually occurs now, I think, is needed for council members to actually understand what we do, because I don't believe there's a full understanding of how those traffic studies are looked at or who does it. So it'd be good.
Okay. All right, thank you. Your five minutes is up. Mr. Strider, Arkansas-Benston.
Mayor Bagley, Council, Strider-Benston. I love this city. It's a little short of perfection. We keep discussing that, but as often is the case, I have agreed with almost everything I've heard tonight, and that's powerful. I think Crystal was set up as a sacrificial lamb for the city. A lot of people made mistakes, legal errors. There were true errors, but why hang her and, you know, and obviate kind of what the overall problem was? As Georgette indicated, there were real problems. There should have been figured out a way to deal with it rather than just hanging somebody. I appreciate the Kocua thing. I've known several young men, boys, who committed suicide recently. All of them happen to be 19 years of age. We have 65,000 deaths in the country from opioid problems, some of them prescription, and maybe three or four deaths per year of some relation to marijuana. So what do we have? The Attorney General of this country, who invests in private prisons, he wants to recreate the drug war against people who have pot, create pot prisons where he can make tons and tons of money off of imprisoning more people, and of course, people who are immigrants and DACA kids. So keep that on your mind as to what the heck is going on in this world. Our president, last week, again proved he's the most racist president ever since Andrew Jackson, also the most vile and profane and kleptocrat. But even Senator Lindsey Graham of South Carolina previously called the president, I quote him directly, "The president is a xenophobic, race-baiting bigot." But then he played golf with him, and he passed a tax thing for his billionaire body, so he's okay now. But even Lindsey Graham could not abide what happened this week, and where the president made the most vile racist characterization of one-third of the human race. And now countries all over the world are reacting to that, maybe belatedly, but that's what we're dealing with. We have an administration where even the concept of truth has been obviated. Even truthiness is now considered too great a burden for the president and his sheep. But a couple of days ago, I gave Martin Luther King's sermon at UCC here in Longmont, and some of you folks came. I thank you greatly. I felt good about it, even though I was tragically disorganized, but I thank y'all. But the very next day, the Longmont-sponsored Martin Luther King celebration, which I had been keynote speaker at the last three years, forgot that I exist. I can't say it surprised me, but it hurt anyway. So I'll give you a few words from my sermon two days ago. Some say, "Lord, Lord, what can I do? Me, insignificant, crippled, greedy, frail, and frightened little mole that I am, what can I do?" Mahatma Gandhi said, "Even though the very best that I can do may be woefully inadequate, still, I must do what I can." If you discover a little truth, whoever you be, wherever you are, please carry it a little further down the path. Pass it on so that your sisters and brothers may not continue to stumble in the dark." Quoting Martin, "The stability of the large world house will involve a revolution of values to accompany the scientific and freedom revolutions. Dispense the profit motive, property rights, and machines, which are more important than people. The giant triplets of racism, materialism, and militarism cannot be conquered. A civilization can flounder as readily in moral and spiritual bankruptcy as it can through financial bankruptcy."
I hate cutting you off, but if I don't, then...
I got through it. I got through it.
All right, cool, thanks.
Any...
And I was there, and you did a fantastic job on Sunday. So thank you for your, for your words.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Duke Rumli. Rumli. Brian Johnston. Yeah, remove the hat.
Yeah, sorry, bad hair day. Just kidding. My name is Brian Johnston. I live at 926 Kaufman. For those of you that know, I know most of you, a couple of you I've only spoken to by email or Facebook, but I've lived in Longmont two years now while completing my master's in public administration. I've also got a graduate certificate in political science, undergrad political science, and another graduate certificate in public management. I attend almost every council meeting in excess of a 90% attendance rate, so I try to keep as civically involved as I can. So a couple, a little bit of feedback I wanted to give, first about staff. I'm really impressed with the city of Longmont's staff. Sean, Harold, Eugene, Jim Golden, the people I pay my electric bill or my NextLight bill to, all very helpful, very professional. No complaints at all with staff. I give them an A. In terms of infrastructure, I'm really impressed with Longmont. I moved here from Washington, DC. Prior to that, Tampa, Florida, Miami, Florida, a couple of small towns in Virginia. Yeah, I've lived a lot of places, but Longmont really is a great city. It's probably my favorite place I've ever lived. And, you know, in terms of infrastructure, I thought the Main Street paving project went well. The Main Street Bridge looks great. I don't know about the financials behind those. I haven't looked into that, but they turned out well. The Sunset Bridge, I think the resilient St. Vane Project's a great endeavor and is trucking along. And utilities are great in Longmont, particularly NextLight. And I said this last year at the same forum, that I think NextLight's one of the greatest municipal accomplishments. municipal accomplishments I've ever run across. I did my thesis on it. It's an incredible thing. You know, besides how good the service is, what it's done to competition in the area. I just got a mail, you know, flyer, whatever you want to call it, in the mail last week from CenturyLink. Forty-nine ninety-nine for life, just like Next Light, except you get one fortieth at a speed. Verizon, well, in October, they were giving away free pumpkins and free Christmas trees in December if you went to Verizon for a, to pay more for slower speed. Next Light is phenomenal. It makes me, aside from the citizens, I think it's the greatest asset that this city has. It's a phenomenal thing. I didn't want to, however, bring up a concern with it. I know that they recently partnered with Layer Three to provide television service. I also know that Layer Three was recently purchased by CenturyLink. Is that correct? It's not Aaron? Or Level Three? Two separate. Okay. I just ran across this a couple of days ago. It concerned me. Thanks for clarification. We'll skip that part. Awesome. Just make sure you protect Next Light. Understand it's part of LPC, which is part of the city's charter or constitution. I've also lived in places that had the same thing with electric. And somehow, Duke Power ended up getting their hands on it. Just protect Next Light at all cost. In terms of parks and rec, I haven't visited them all, but seems like a very good parks and rec, you know, operations within the city. There are a couple of things I did want to bring up about that. I've mentioned this in October. I realize now that was real bad timing with the elections and the change in council. But the skate park at Sandstone, I'd like to suggest it be named after a guy I've never met, but a gentleman by the name of Joe McLaren, a seven-time consecutive world champion in skateboarding. He does the Swallow Skateboarding, but he's a seven-time consecutive world champion. I thought it'd be a nice gesture to name the city's only skate park after him because that's a phenomenal accomplishment. I do want to bring up something about golf. You are, you're in the upcoming budget that will, like around August, that you'll be looking at next year's budget. It's projected that there's going to be a proposal for a twenty-five million dollar bond for irrigation for golf courses. It's been, you know, it's projected 2019, last two budgets. I just want to urge you to use extreme caution on spending twenty-five million dollars for irrigation on a sport that is rapidly dying. I play golf. I grew up...
That game saved the free world this week, though.
Now, you know, I grew up on a golf course. Ninth hole's in my backyard. You all want to go out and take me out on the golf course? I'll spank you and take your money on the golf course. However, twenty-five million dollars over twenty years for irrigation for a sport that's declining in popularity, you need to look at policy alternatives. I don't know what those will be. Perhaps turning Sunset into an open space, which has cost, but longer, some initial cost, but in the long run shorter, whatever. I would consider policy alternatives, my only suggestion. And lastly, that's it.
Thank you, Brian.
You guys do a good job and we appreciate you.
Although the first, you know, you were so positive that, you know, this is the first time I'm thinking, we should just let him keep talking. Longmont's great. Yeah. Yeah. But, all right, Zachary, Harold, yeah, sure. Come on up.
Mayor Council, the total bond is twenty-five million. The golf irrigation piece is a smaller portion of that, which is slightly, it's around two, slightly less than two million. So, it's the total bond for all of the projects is twenty-five million. No, for the entire city. No, we have a list of projects that includes some building improvements and other activities. No, no, that's only, that's only part of it. Jim has a full list. But what we included in that was maintenance on a lot of our facilities. Golf was a small piece of that, and that was the irrigation system. Around two million.
All right, thank you. Yet again, another example of our awesome, knowledgeable staff. Indeed. All right. Reduced it from by ninety percent. Thirty seconds. The public asks, man, we answer. All right, Zachary Botkin?
I don't have a speech prepared like all these guys.
It's okay.
I've lived in Longmont, little over... Like that? Oh, I hate the sound of my own voice, but, okay.
Beautiful. Don't worry.
I've lived in Longmont a little over ten years now. And I consider it my hometown, even though I've, well, it's pretty much the only city I can remember. Nice town. I would, as I said, I don't have a speech prepared like these guys. So, I just have a few thoughts. Could you tell me what you guys consider our relationship to the city of Boulder is?
Who'd like to answer? Councilmember...
Neighbor.
Councilmember Martin. All right, well, she said neighbor. I guess I, what I would say is Zan Jones is their mayor. And just, I consider her and her council and the city allies in many issues, whether it be oil and gas development, or whether it be affordable housing. We very much share FastTrax. Also, they're becoming an ally, I hope. So, we share a lot of the same desires. We live, we're truly next-door neighbors. And what's good for them is good for us. And what's good for us is good for them, at least in theory. And so, also, part of the family. We're, you know, we're colleagues and allies with Boulder County Commissioners, as well as the other cities in Boulder County, like Louisville and Lafayette and Superior. So, I guess that's kind of our relationship, even though a lot of times your people say, "We don't want to be bolder." I mean, we're not bolder, of course. But they're our friends and allies.
Yes, well, I, well, I always have this feeling that Boulder considers us to be maybe sort of a suburb of them, considering, I have a feeling that whole, the whole north, the whole southwest part of Longmont is suburbans who commute to Boulder and back. And they just like people to, like, not let them push us around, if you know what I mean. So, as you said, we're not bolder. And I'd just like you guys to remember that.
Well, that's great. And I can, I can tell you, as I look around at my fellow council members, I can't think of a one that would put up with anybody pushing them around. But thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know your name, sir, but I could overhear when you came up. Yep, come on up. I don't know your name. But if you could say your name and address for the record, we would love to hear what you have to say. Unless it's really mean, at which point, no, but we'll listen anyway.
Stuart Snow, eighty-four eighty-seven Greenwood Drive. I'm here to urge you to approve, as quickly as you can, the Kokoa drug treatment facility. I can just quote very briefly from the Wall Street Journal, January fifth, "Colorado has the highest rate of first-time youth marijuana use in the country. According to smart approaches to marijuana, cannabis use among young people has increased by sixty-five percent in Colorado since legalization. The crime rate in Colorado has increased eleven times faster than in other large cities since legalization. Drug-driving facilities doubled in Washington following legalization. Positive drug tests for marijuana in 2016 increased at more than double the rate in Colorado and Washington as nationwide." And January fourteenth, the government tallied sixty-three thousand, six hundred overdose drug deaths in 2016, another record. Most of the deaths involve prescription opioids such as Oxycontin and Vicodin. You know, we have professionals experienced bringing our own money, building a facility in our neighborhood to treat these serious problems that we are going to face. And the statistics are there, the opioid crisis is there, the increased use of marijuana among our teenagers. I cannot think of any reason why you wouldn't embrace them and get them here as quickly as possible, particularly given the risk that they might go somewhere else. Why don't we want this in our neighborhood? I just wanted to make that statement. I urge you to, to embrace this facility, to do all you can to get it here, to help them to be there, because it's something we need, we'll love in our community when we need it.
I don't know what time you came to council meeting, but Councilmember Peck asked us to put it back on the agenda in the prevailing party. The last vote said, "Sure." So, we'll be talking about it again in a couple of days.
Just wanted to tell you, I supported it.
All right, great. Thank you. Councilmember Peck?
Sir, what publication did you just quote?
Wall Street Journal.
Wall Street. What issue? Do you remember what issue that was in?
I'll give you my paper if you want it.
Okay.
January fifth.
January fifth. Okay.
And January fourteenth.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right. Now, I can send them to you if you want them.
No, I'll find it. Thanks.
That's it for the people who signed up. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up and talk, question, or yell at us as a group or individually? No? Oh. All right, all right.
Michael Farnsworth, twenty-five College Court, Mayor Councilman. One thing that I just came to mind, that I just found out Sunday, that the bus service for handicap has been discontinued on Sundays.
We will... Phil?
One of our, one of the church members that I go to has been coming every Sunday with the, I'm not sure which service, but they're there every Sunday. And...
Well, yeah, I see, I see confused looks on our city management. And I think that Phil, who's in charge of transportation, isn't here, but we'll check up with him.
Okay.
And if you could also give a name, and, I mean, just later, if you could give one of us the details, we can follow up and ask.
Super. Thank you.
All right, great. All right, let's go ahead and move on to mayor and council comments. Okay, nothing? All right, sorry. Mayor Protem Christiansen?
Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not feeling very well tonight. But we had, there was a wonderful presentation over at Silver Creek Academy. And I missed Strider's participation particularly. But it was a wonderful program. And it was mentioned that in Dr. King's last book, which was called, "Where Do We Go From Here: Chaos or Community?" He said, "We will either live together as brothers or die as fools." I think that's something we should all remember and listen to each other a little more and be more compassionate.
All right, I guess one thing, one thing that I'd like to bring up tonight, so I was at my first Metro Mayor's Caucus. And typically, you don't bring this stuff up. But I'd like input. And I've already talked to Harold. The Metro Mayor's consists of the forty mayors of the Denver metro area. And Longmont, as always, is the end of the line. It's the northernmost city. And my, the group acts with consensus, meaning the whole group has to agree. And then they'll petition and lobby the state legislature or various bodies. There is currently an issue before the caucus that basically is asking a question, should I support or get behind a sales tax, a statewide sales tax for transportation, meaning building and strengthening our infrastructure? There is no doubt and no question, a need for the infrastructure. My comment, along with the mayors of Superior, Louisville, Lafayette, and even Mayor Jones out of Boulder, was, last time we came together and got behind it, we got burned on FastTrack and the RTD routes. And so, doing it again might, might be a little stupid until we either get what we had before or guarantee this time that it's not going to happen again. And we kind of left that meeting. I just, I made Longmont's presence known. Let's just put it that way. I know you'd expect nothing less. So, I just want your thoughts before I respond. I'm going to forward the email to city staff and you folks as well. But your thoughts? Councilmember Finley, just taking order?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would be in favor of that because it's a statewide tax and hopefully, not just, FastTrax was for just the metro area. This is a statewide tax, I believe, that's being proposed. So, we wouldn't have that same...
Danger.
Danger. So, I'd be in favor of it.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. I just want to say that this is being sponsored, this initiative is being sponsored by the Denver Metro Mayor's Chamber of Commerce. No, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce is funding the initiative and putting, getting input as to what's to be on the initiative. They are actually bypassing legislature in Senate since it failed last time. So, it'll be a petition gathering initiative. They'll have to get signatures in order to put it on the ballot. So, I'm in favor of, what we're asking really is that some of the money, perhaps a half, a half a percent, for not just the northwest corridor in FastTrax, but the unfunded corridors. Because there are four corridors in counties that are, that are not funded. And FastTrack suffered what everybody else did, that during the recession, people didn't spend money. So, we didn't get the retail sales tax in. And with the online shopping, we're not getting any sales tax there. So, we're really behind in financing it. So, I'm definitely behind this. Also, if we don't put on the initiative that it should be all the unfunded corridors, we won't get the support of the other counties if they think they're just, if they're, if we're only asking for one part of the corridor to be funded. So, we have to ask for everything that hasn't been unfunded in order to get the signatures and the votes. So...
Does it change your mind at all? So, the presentation showed that a one percent sales tax had fifty-six, fifty-six percent support, I'm sorry, one-half percent, one, one-half of a cent for every dollar, or one-half percent, had fifty-six percent support throughout the state. And then fifty, it dropped to fifty-three percent at one percent. And it's the entire state. So, it wouldn't just be the FastTrack communities.
The RTD district, right.
It would be all, all the state. Does that change your thoughts at all?
No, not at all. Because it's being sold as a regional, not only a regional, but a connecting transportation initiative to fix all the roads, to fix a large amount going to I-25, and a large amount to the rural areas who never get anything for their roads.
Right.
So, Boulder County is so, seems to be so anti-taxes for transportation, that we feel that if they don't get something in this initiative, it would be very hard to get the support of Boulder County. So, yes, I'm in favor of it.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem?
I want to thank Councilwoman Peck for her years of work on this issue. And also to Mayor Bagley for actually wrestling together these people and getting them to speak up. Because, you know, until we say, "No, we're not going to get roped into another thing when we have already done this." And it was also presented as a regional thing, and it has not been a regional thing. It has benefited Denver inordinately. And that's fine. But we also now need to benefit from this. And I'm all for what you suggested. I think this is a very good idea to, to stand firm and say, "You've got to work on this a little bit more. And we need to be included."
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I in particular would like to see that we have a clear statement of objectives. Because I don't believe that the future of transportation can be easily, public transportation in particular, can be easily determined at this time. And I want to understand what they think they're going to do and what methods they're going to use to decide what the best way forward is, so that we don't end up with an antiquated system.
Councilmember Rodriguez, you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'll just chime in a second, I guess. Thank you, Mayor Bagley.
No problem. Looking out for you, buddy.
Anyway, I guess I would like also to see a little bit more detailed analysis and information on it. But at the end of the day, with all due respect to what I feel are very, very adequate, if not great, local, state legislations. to what I feel are very, very adequate, if not great, local state legislators here in our area specifically, I wouldn't mind seeing a little bit of a workaround and letting the will of the people and the voice of the people truly start to dictate the way our funding is allocated. And I believe this is an issue that our rural neighbors oftentimes are neglected in. And so allowing a statewide vote, or supporting an initiative for a statewide vote is very much on my preferreds, preferred list. So I would be in support simply for that matter alone.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my, just so you guys know where my thoughts are right now, was just eventually support it, but just be real loud with our neighbors to let them know that we want to, we don't want to keep funding their trains. So anyway, Harold, anything? Eugene, any comments? All right, with that, good forum, good forum. We're adjourned.